Some people don't retire? Like, yeah.
By the time you retire, that will not be enough.
It will not be enough. It won't be enough. Because I was calculating. One of my kids was asking me that. They're like, when are you retiring? I'm like, well, because I was saying this is my 20th year of teaching. And then they're like, okay, so when can you retire? I'm like, well, technically, I can't collect social security until 67 and a half. And I was like, oh my God, I still have 20 years to go. Oh my gosh. Because I'm 42, so I have 25 years.
You could have a second career.
Yes, to go. And half, don't forget the half. That half, don't forget the half. That half, that is the longest half.
Well, this is a positive.
It really opened my eyes. What am I doing next?
You have a second hope.
Right.
Welcome. This is a special meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act. At this time, we will be going into an executive session for approximately 30 minutes. The purpose of this executive session is to evaluate the qualifications of applicants for public employment and to discuss with legal counsel the legal or financial risk of a course of action. We will return at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
It is six oh three, and welcome. This is a special meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act. The purpose of this special meeting is a motion to select the new superintendent. All right. Is there any discussion before we start the motion process? I will entertain a motion tonight.
I think we have to entertain a motion right before we can even discuss.
We can do both.
Call for discussion.
I will entertain a motion.
Okay. I move that we start the selection for the next superintendent of Kent School District.
A second.
Discussion.
Okay, folks, get out your reading glasses and hang on. One, I remind you, I have been on this school board of directors for four years. I'm just returning. And one of the jobs, the primary job of the school board under state law requires the board to select a superintendent and then work with him or her to provide an appropriate education system with progressive steps to achieve graduates with basic skills and decision-making training to begin the next stage of their development and becoming a productive member of society. Now, we, the board, have taken this charge seriously and spent much more time than is evident by formal meetings, and all of us took the time to talk to people within our community as well as to others who knew these finalist candidates. Regardless of who is chosen as a super... And I faded away already. It is not about where we have been, but where we are going. Issues of transparency and trust in the central office have been topics of concern which have been expressed by staff to me. The past did not end well, and I want to be real frank up front. Transparency is critical for the success of the school district to have the public stand behind us when we ask for extra resources. So you may be assured, whoever becomes the next superintendent, I will be on transparency from day one. But as a board, we are concerned about where we are going. A good new start begins with consideration of how a large urban school district can meet the needs of such a diverse student population. The range of factors in success of this mission in a school district starts with its leadership. If the superintendent has lost of staff and the public... Am I still here? Repairing that image of a central office that does not care about how the building staff is doing impedes real progress. If staff feel they are not being supported in these trying times, and heaven knows they have been trying, not only does the current public service of education suffer, but the ability to recruit and retain great employees sets back the whole system. Now, there is a joint leadership that is part of state law. It says, "The school board of directors and the superintendent shall, in fact, direct the district and carry it through the various urgencies that they encounter." It's a partnership, and I'm grateful for the previous board of directors who recognized that it's the future that matters and left the decision of a finalist selection in the hands of the newly elected board of directors and, of course, the others who, of course, continue serving their term. Now, of the candidates, all three are bright and professional people on that finalist list. Each brought a solid record of leadership and accomplishments. All three want a school system that creates opportunities for all children to develop their potential. Whoever becomes the superintendent needs to consider internal factors, such as staff morale, a supportive structure which leads to student success, and a sense of being valued while working in the Kent School District. External factors include our various partners, whether they are state agencies, municipalities, various groups within the community, or the ominous state legislature, which often puts the final curve on whatever we do in a given year. All of these require working with them to achieve the best outcomes for our students. Now, I believe that interim superintendent Vella has worked very hard at all of those jobs, and in some cases, it's a bit of an uphill climb as since he was associated with the previous superintendent, whether he was part of the programs that were laid out and carried out in what I consider to be a very top-down management style. I do not believe that is the nature of this man. I have known him for a very long time. The most fundamental characteristic in any leadership position is integrity. Can you believe them when they say it? I believe in Israel Vella. I've known him for a long time. I know him to be honest and believe he can restore transparency to the public in how we operate. He respects mid-managers, who have the very challenging job of managing buildings, and heaven knows each of those has a particular specific set of challenges based on the particular makeup of the students that go into that particular building. And when we go to talk about trying to take care of the educational process, I am so impressed with the strategic plans that each of the buildings made and have carried out, which are data-driven and show very positive results. It isn't a perfect climate at this point in time in any public school district in this state, or for that matter, in the nation, simply because, of course, having been out of school for so long, coming back in did not guarantee a smooth transition, and we know it has not been smooth, that there is social and emotional challenges that have to be met, and part of that is simply stability, and the students haven't had stability. In any case, I believe Israel respects classified staff because he knows how essential they are to keeping the buildings running, and he understands that the most basic of all services offered by a school system begins with classroom teachers. They want to be successful, and they want to feel they are supported by a central administration which understands just how challenging the present environment is. I believe Israel Vella can do this, and I am voting for him as our next superintendent.
Further discussion?
Are we going down the line?
Never.
Okay. I prepared. This is a hard decision, and this is an important decision. This is, in fact, I think you said it, Director Clark, the board's most important decision. We've all spent lots of time and energy on this process, so has staff. My focus as a board director has always been on following law and policy, listening to learn, and always encourage best practices in board governance so our students, staff, and taxpayers can have the best possible outcomes. That's what we all want, I think. And I've applied those same principles to this process. You know, for background, I want to step back into a little background. Years of data and research have shown that the best-practiced governance system for a school board work is policy governance. So that's the board and superintendent relationship, has explicit division, interactions are clearly defined by law and policy, and the superintendent works under the parameters set by the board. But that's not the only structure the board governance can take. You know, my brain, I've said this before from the dais, my brain processes through patterns, and in all my years in this district as a parent, and through my advocacy and time on the school board here in KSD, I keep seeing similar patterns play out through several board superintendent's governance teams where it appears that a lot of times, rather than policy governance with this district, we more commonly lean towards the executive or maybe autocratic form of governance whereby more often than not, the board is kind of de facto subordinate to the superintendent, and, you know, and that executive controls process and direction. And this, you know, observers watching that kind of pattern can see, you know, where the bulk of the power and decision-making is typically done through the superintendent as the executive and supported by sometimes the board president or like just a bare majority of the board. So my wondering is this, and I've thought a lot about this. Has this pattern and this habit, this tradition, I mean, it's a tradition, right, of most often engaging in this executive form of governance supported this, you know, this district, or has it harmed, you know, the positive outcomes that I know everyone on this dais, everyone in this room, everyone out watching today on TV, you know, has that helped or harmed, you know, the positive outcomes I think everybody wants for kids, right? Because that's why we're here. My further wondering is if this pattern of governance behavior potentially has had, you know, a negative impact on this process. So here, you know, we're at the end of this process, today's the day, and, you know, I looked again at all the feedback and what traits were desired in a new superintendent, and the ones that most stood out to me is someone who is unity, you know, someone who is a unifier, honesty or transparency, Director Clark, and thought leadership. So first, you know, I just want to talk about those a little bit. So first, you know, like many other people, I was looking for a unifier. I think other people from the dais wanted that too, which I define as someone whose observable behaviors would show many examples of, say, you know, when you're looking for a leadership with staff, you want to take the heat and give the praise. So that's a, you know, a little thing we talk about in HR. And create a positive environment where each staff member feels valued, respected, and is treated without any fear of retaliation. So some of those positive measurable outcomes that a reasonable person could expect to see with those behaviors would be low or no union grievances. Obviously, there's never none, but very low union grievances of any type. But very low union grievances of any type, very low turnover in staff or students, or board directors for that matter. And then when it comes to the community, what I define as a unifier is someone whose observable behaviors would be a leader who encourages student voice. Like, we haven't had any student voice through this process. A leader who reaches out to those students and stakeholders who have concerns and creates opportunities where that leader is listening to learn and through that learning can apply changes where they can to improve outcomes. So some of the measurable outcomes a reasonable person would expect of those behaviors would be students, staff, or parents that don't come to board meetings more than once with the same complaint or concern. Or many stakeholders coming to board meetings with a consistent pattern of concerns. Remember, my brain looks at patterns. That spans months or years without resolve. And surely, I think it goes without saying that it would only be a rare and unusual occurrence that any complaint that someone says from the dais right there or emails to us wouldn't reach the level of a negative article in the newspaper on King Five or whatever. So, that's unity. Secondly, like many others, I was looking for honesty in a leader. I always look for that. I expect that of myself. And I define honesty as someone whose observable behaviors consist of the obvious. You know, telling the truth, answering all questions from the board with complete truth, telling the complete truth to all stakeholders even if it's hard, and directing staff to do the same. Another observable behavior would be to encourage agenda and discussion from the dais that is difficult. Because believe me, this conversation I'm having right now, this one-sided monologue I'm having right now is difficult, right? And one of the measurable outcomes I think a reasonable person could expect of this behavior would again be news articles or public records that reveal that stakeholders weren't given all the pertinent information on any topic. Because that is where I think the root of a lot of distrust in this district has started. The gap between what is said and what, you know, is, happens. Third and last, so that was honesty. So third and last, like many others, I was looking, I'm looking for a thought leader, which I define as someone whose work behaviors exhibit organized proactive actions that result in positive outcomes for all students. Because that's again, why we're here, for students. Some of the measurable outcomes a reasonable person could expect from this behavior would be rare incidence of staff having to deal reactively to a situation. And through evidence of written plans constructed without bias to special interests or corporate concerns, and those plans being accessible to students, parents, and staff, which are easy to track and followed with fidelity, always with a focus on best outcomes for students and the staff that support our students. You know, I have a background in theater. Sometimes it happens that after the first round of auditions and callbacks, the artistic staff just doesn't find the person that fits their vision for that leading role. Because that's crucial, that leading role is crucial. And when this happens, it is frustrating for everyone who took so much time to engage. And it, not going to sugarcoat it, it leads to hurt feelings especially from those people who auditioned for that role and really, really wanted it. But, you know, at the end of the day, going through another round of auditions to find that best-fit person to lead the show is going to make the entire process and that entire production so much better. And the funny thing in theater too is the person in that leading role sets the tone for the entire cast, the entire show, the entire production. This decision is way more important than a show. This is the most important decision that's faced this board during my tenure. I will be eternally grateful for all the time and care our search firm has taken, our staff, all the hours of time for our staff. And my board colleagues have put so much time and observable effort into this process. I'm so grateful to our three finalists who interviewed and fully engaged in this process. There is no doubt that each finalist had wonderful qualities that brought them to this final interview stage. And I was very proud that they all engaged so well in this process. And so this is where, this is the hard part. This is the uncomfortable part. And you know, I've learned many years in HR that more common than not, past behavior indicates future behavior. And that individuals who show evidence of wanting to progress up to positions of increasing responsibility within their field or their organization, you know, they realize and they know that they're in essence always auditioning for that next bigger role. And it has bearing. And our community participated in this process. And we've, I think up until about five o'clock, we were getting emails, and I appreciate that too. My final vote in no way at all negates the kindness, the personality, the talents, skills, and positive impacts and accomplishments our three finalists have had in their years of dedicated service to the students and stakeholders within the educational communities that they have served. So I've, you know, I find myself at a place where my vote today will be my reflection on the uncomfortable conclusion that I've come to and one that I've been hearing from the community as I listen and review and that I've come to myself after carefully and thoughtfully engaging in this process, which is, I believe this board needs to continue searching for that unifying, honest thought leader. When I go back to those three things that I hung on to, that can lead, that unifying, honest thought leader that can lead this district to the best possible outcome for our students and stakeholders. So my vote today won't be for or against any candidate, but it will be for continuing the search, which is that is what I believe needs to happen.
I just want to go back to when I was running for disposition and realize that as a new board member, I have to vote for the next superintendent. And I take that very serious. I wanted to make sure that when the process started and we were presented with multiple candidates, 24 candidates, and we had to choose from eight of them, I put away my bias. My background is an engineer, and one plus one equals two. I have no emotions. I always look at the things that make sense, logical, that I can look at it and say, yes, I've done my homework. And I believe every single one of us here have done their homework. Now, we have had a process that was very transparent to the community. Not only, not only that the process was transparent to the community, I myself, since I'm a representative of the community, went inside the community and asked the community, what are their thoughts after they watched the videos? I have gotten multiple results. We, we were elected to disposition to listen to everyone, but at the end, make a decision for the community. The community voted for us to sit at disposition, so therefore we make those decisions. Now, can we change the negative things that happened before in the past? The answer is no. We can never change that back. But we have an opportunity to make a change in the future. That opportunity is where I'm always going to look. And I want to make sure that whatever I decide tonight, that decision is reflective of that decision. That, that I have that opportunity to make sure that I'm making for the community. Now, we are a board. I hear all this, you know, this and that on all of that. But in the end, we have to function as one. Because the community depends on us to do that. We have to inspire people to do things they didn't even think they would be able to do. And that's where it comes from the top. We have that opportunity in front of us. And I'm making my decision tonight according to that. And when I looked at every single candidate that we were presented, and I created a box for each candidate and the categories that I would judge each candidate, the only candidate that had checked every single box for me was interim superintendent Vella. And I know I can sleep tonight when I make that decision. Because in the end, I have to look myself in the mirror and say, have I made the right decision? With that said, I don't want to delay this decision to make this district move forward that has been in a temporary situation for the past, I don't know, eight months, nine months. And thanks, I'm done.
So I want to thank the candidates that interviewed with us. And I agree that we had amazing candidates. Part of me, like, I've been a teacher for 20 years. And like, what I've learned is I like, I'm a heart person. I'm not one that's really about facts, statistics, whatnot, although it's important. I think there's what I call head people, which I feel like are like the logical, like statistical people. And I feel like that there's heart people. I feel like a lot of educators are heart people. So sometimes it's, I look at, like, how do people make me feel? Do they make me feel inspired? And I think that's really important. It's almost, I don't want to say gut feeling because that just sounds not good. But it's just like, I want, I want to feel inspired. I want to feel like there's caring involved. And I just feel like, based on all the feedback and comments, like, there's not one person that everyone's like, yes, let's get behind this person. And I looked at all the comments from online. I looked at my emails, and there's just, there's so much division. And I was thinking about that, and I, even, even this evening, and talking to colleagues who live in this area and who don't live in this area, and thinking about like, what do we want? We want people to inspire us. And I think all the candidates were great in their own ways. And so I was really impressed with the quality of candidates that we had. But I just didn't feel like there was this one unifying person that everyone got behind. And I don't know if that's normal or if that's abnormal. I mean, this is my first time on here doing this. And so I just, I just didn't see that one person everyone could get behind. And so I was trying to think about like, like, is there something that I can look forward to in each of the candidates? So I went back and watched all the videos of all the candidates. I didn't go back and watch our original meeting about what we wanted in a superintendent. I should have. But I looked at that on paper that was, that we had discussed. And I was trying to think about the timeline. Was the timeline rushed? Because I feel, I feel like a lot of community members thought it was, the timeline is rushed. I think our company that we hired, I think they did a great job getting us candidates and getting us some final candidates. I just thought maybe what we like started too late, even though we had a lot of candidates, I just don't know, I just don't know. And I was debating, I'm like, do we want another interim for a year? Do we want to delay this? Do we want to move this forward so that we don't rush this process and decision? And I'm just, I just want someone that everyone's like a strong yes for. And I don't think we saw that in these candidates, which is, which is unfortunate because I like our current interim superintendent. I think he does a lot of great things. I just feel like, I just feel like that there's just not, he's just not unifying. And I don't feel like with the community, and I don't necessarily think that everyone in the community participated or responded, but I just want someone that everyone thinks is going to be amazing. Everyone's going to get behind it. And I don't know if that'll ever happen. And so that was kind of my struggle as I went through this process. And so I want to, I feel like we didn't get as much community feedback as we should have. I didn't feel like we got hardly any student feedback, which I think we should have in this process. I didn't think it's great that all the candidates went to Covington Elementary and talked to a sixth grade class, but I just feel like we could have done more. Like, I feel like student voice should have been embedded throughout. I also agree about past administration really tainted, I think, our district. And I think that that was a hindrance to our candidate pool. I think, I'm a big believer in restorative practices. I'm very, like, there was some harm caused, I think, by our last administration, and I think it really affected a lot of people. And I don't think there's been any time to deal with that. And part of restorative practice is restoring harm that was caused. And I don't feel like that was done. And I feel like, and I was, I was even thinking about this today, it was just like, what's the, what's the point or a purpose of an interim? Usually an interim is meant to like, just keep things sustainable until someone new comes in. And I thought, I think there was an expectation from the community that all this change was going to happen with the interim. I don't know if that's realistic, but I also was trying to think like, what, what would an interim do? Is this what interim does? Was healing, was healing involved? And I don't think it has been. And I think that that's going to be something that we struggle with as we continue to move forward. Regardless, I think there's, whoever the superintendent is, needs to be a healer. Needs to be able to connect with the community, because I think the community was harmed. And I think that harm needs to be restored in some way. And so, and I know that one of our, you know, goals is looking at doing a restorative approach at our schools. And I think we need to do that with fidelity. But like, we can't ask our students to do that if we haven't even done that with our staff and the people who worked here. And I think that we can't ask students to do it if we're not even going to do it as the adults. And so for me, like, looking at some of the things Director Bennerger said was in my comments, just like, we had, we had parents who came to multiple meetings to deal with a situation that could have been easily remedied. We, like, we have so many different grievances. There's so much concern over censorship and banning books that wasn't really handled appropriately. And, and again, I was like, is that the job of the interim? And is that something that was caused by whoever our interim was? And I don't know. Like, I really don't know. I'm just putting that out there as things that were my thoughts. And just looking at the emails that we got and the level of grievances, we have a lot of grievances specifically with KEA. And, and also I'm very surprised by the amount of staff leaving. And I know that some of them have been for good, moving on and up to different positions. But I was also really concerned by the amount of people retiring, leaving, moving on. And that could just be normal. But again, it made my wheels in my head turn. Like, my heart was like, like, why? What's going on? And I just, a lot of issues, just looking at special education, we don't have a head of HR and our interim is kind of working with that. And I'm just like, there's, there's a lot. There's a lot happening. So for me, I'm just thinking like, I don't know if the candidates that, our finalists, were, any of them were something, someone unifying that everyone in the community can get behind. And, you know, I'm wondering that maybe we do need to kind of continue our search and kind of cast a wider net. I know, maybe that, maybe it was timeline that prevented. But I know that our finalists were amazing people, but I just don't know, there wasn't one that everyone rallied behind. And so that is a concern for me. So that's probably where my head is going to go tonight, is thinking about what we can do to get a unifying voice. And regardless who gets selected, I think the expectation's going to be creating that unification, connecting with community, connecting with staff, connecting with students to ensure that we can restore some previous harm that was caused. So those are my remarks.
I have volunteered in this district and been on committees for a long time. And it, it's been my pleasure to know Mr. Villa in various positions that he's held in this district long before he's been an interim superintendent. We go way back with the Parent Engagement Task Force and all that, and how he brought that into fruition when he came here to Pasa and all that that he helped make possible. I want to technically say and for the record that nobody on this board had, has taken a vote, a straw vote, or anything else. We don't know how this is going to end up until we take a final vote here in public tonight. And I think it's really important that our community hears that and believes that because it happens to be the truth. it happens to be the truth. And you can decide what you want is truth, but that is a fact. We've all taken this job very seriously and with due diligence. It did take a little while for us to get up and running on a search firm because of a lot of circumstances that we really, you know, didn't realize that our former superintendent was going to leave, and he did. But we were faced with that, and we also were faced with three new board members, really, two, and one that had been kind of with us, but not formally with us. So we were under a different circumstance, and I do think it's important that the board comes in and that it's going to be here for, you know, technically, the new board for four years, has a say in leadership, and that's why that happened. And again, I've talked to Dr. Ladder, who actually was the head of this search firm, over and over again, and asked him in sessions, do you feel that we had adequate time to come up with candidates and go through our process, even though perhaps some of our board members felt we started a little later? And he answered, and he's been a superintendent in several different districts for a long time, and he also works for the search firm. He didn't feel that that was a hindrance. And I was really pleased to see 24 candidates that they brought to us, that people are moving around. It might be an interesting fact that in most people who are higher up in management or management positions, in today's world, do not stay in their positions very long. They transition, because guess what? They find maybe something else they want to do, or they find bigger opportunities. And sure, when you're looking at a district this size and you see people moving to other positions, there could be a multitude of reasons why they've done that, and it doesn't necessarily mean that they don't like their former job. The one in front of them might just be a much better fit or a much better opportunity. And because it's such a district, I've kind of looked statistically, and I don't see that this district has an overwhelming turnover in many issues. However, I do, I'm the mother of a teacher who has taught for 25 years, and I realized that the last couple of years, and that young lady is an energy bunny, she loves teaching, but it's been a struggle. And I know our teachers are facing burnout. And even though we're back in person and we're taking off our masks in certain places, it's going to take a long time to heal that. And you have kids that have, are coming back into classrooms that have been out for so long, they forgot about their major social skills, and they're having to relearn all that. It's been crazy. This process has been interesting. I think that the eight finalists that we came to as a board was interesting to me that we came to those eight finalists before we narrowed it down to three, from those eight finalists that the, excuse me, the eight finalists that the search firm has selected as our top candidates, and the three that we narrowed it down to, all our board directors, really came to the same conclusion of those three that we finalized. And there was no communication whatsoever on that, and I thought that was a really, really good sign. And I took the advantage of, because I have the time, to spend as much time with the candidates as I possibly could in person, because I'm a people person, and I learn from the people, I'm around and I listen, and I spent all day watching, especially the candidates that I hadn't had as much exposure to, watching their motion, watching the interaction with the crowd, watching how people felt when they talked, how comfortable they were. And believe me, all three candidates, to go all day long and not miss a beat and keep talking and keep engaging in all they did, I was pretty much amazed. I think if I had to go through that process and the jobs I've had, and some of them have been pretty intense jobs that I've gone after, intense evaluations, but nothing like that, I was pretty much amazed, and I thought we got three really qualified candidates. Every one of them could be, could run this district. And so it's up to the people up here to decide what we want to do with it. I think it's very important in this district that we develop a culture, and I've heard this over and over again, I've heard this in books and leadership that I've been reading, that we need to hire from within, we need to encourage and build our own staff, that we need to say, we have people in this district can do this job, we don't have to search all over the United States. And if we don't have that faith in our people from the very root of whatever they do, if we don't want to encourage them to stay with our district, to be retained in our district, and say, if you want more, if you want a little more position or a little more education, we're going to help you develop that, and we're going to bring you into our thing. And that's what retention is about, not only respect, but it's also being valued, and also that you see that you have an avenue, a trajectory, that you can go where you want to go and make what you want to make. And I think if we don't begin to realize that, and it's not just in the superintendent position, I think there's, honestly, I think there's people right behind our interim superintendent Vella who are very qualified, that we want to bring up and continue in our district and maybe even take over at some time when we need another superintendent. So tonight, you know, again, it's no mystery, I've answered tons of email, I've been out in the community, I've tried to listen to different people in different positions, and it is true, there've been a mixed message on some of the candidates that we're looking at or where we want to go with that. So guess what? The buck stops here. It's up to us to make a decision. And I'm going with the best I have feelings, data, direction, involvement that I can in selecting a candidate, and tonight, I am fully in support of our interim superintendent to make him our permanent superintendent, Israel Vella.
It's a matter of order. There should be a motion to appoint, and that should be seconded, and there could be further discussion, but I didn't see a motion to appoint.
Yeah, I realize that. Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint Mr. Vella to be the permanent superintendent.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm going to request a roll call vote.
Okay. So what does that mean, Tim? Tell me.
Let's go to the vote. But I mean, we all have said whatever that we wanted to say in private and in public. There is no mystery of where we are. That's what Director Clark is implying, too. So I wish it was not that way, because that sends a divided board message to the incoming superintendent and the community. But unfortunately, we have to make that decision to make sure that we move forward for this district. That's all I have to say.
Any further discussion?
Just a question on technicalities. So roll call vote, which you just say your name and yea or nay, correct?
Normally, the secretary of the meeting asks.
Okay. Okay.
Secretary of the meeting officer can call on the individuals and they give their response. Thank you.
So our secretary's not here, so that falls to me, correct? Thank you. Okay. Just want to know my job here, so I can at least do something right tonight. Any other further discussion? All right. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Director Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Benninger, how do you vote?
Nay.
Director Farah?
Aye.
Director Bento?
Nay.
And myself is aye. The motion carries.
Can I appoint a privilege before we adjourn?
Sure, absolutely.
So regardless of the outcome of the vote, I'm always committed to making sure that whoever our leadership is that we're going to work with, regardless of my vote, so I'm very excited to welcome Superintendent Vella, but just knowing that I'm committed to still do this work and still work with the board and still work with the incoming superintendent.
I would echo many of those statements. I also, I'm committed to my work on this board, so, and to working with the board governance team and moving forward.
That being said, I would like to say that Israel Vella is the next superintendent of the Kent School District. The effective date will be determined pending contract finalization. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.